All right, let's roll on to the parks master plan then. Who's presenting that?
I can introduce it. Good evening, Council. Sam Crummett in Community Development. This evening, our Parks Consultants are with us online and they're going to give us an update on our Parks Master Planning. So take it away on your end.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Justin Martin with MIG, Project Manager for our, excuse me, Design Consultant Team. And I'll just let Matt and Mike introduce themselves. Make sure we're all okay on audio.
Hi, I'm Matthew McCrea, Landscape Architect with MIG.
And Mike Abate, Landscape Architect with Abate Designs, part of the MIG team.
Cool. All right, just trying to get my Slide share set up here. Okay. Is that coming through okay?
Yep, we can see it. Yes.
Great. I think hopefully I'm sharing the correct screen. I think I am. Awesome. Yeah, well, thanks for having us to present today. Virtually at least. And yeah, so we just wanted to go through the process so far, working through this project to update the master plans, create master plans for four park sites in the city. So we've been working on this for a number of months now. And today we'll just run through our progress to date and what we've, what we've started with and where we're at now. Share kind of our initial findings as far as our site review for each of the four sites and two to three concept options we've developed for each one. We'll provide a brief summary of the feedback we've gotten so far from public. We've had a one public open house in the beginning of December and then ran a virtual online open house and we've just closed that last week. And so we've just kind of been kind of pulling together our the feedback from that and then open it up for discussion. So as I mentioned, the process is we're reviewing or developing master plans for four sites in the city. Well, one is just outside the city limits technically. Those sites are for the Remy property, Gardner Oaks Property, Fairgrounds Park, and the Durkey property, which is excuse me, the one that's just a bit east of the city limit. And our goal is to develop a single master plan for guiding the future development for each of the sites based on the needs and what the city is looking for at each of those, each of those locations. And I, here we go. So as I mentioned, we're going through this process. We started early last year. We did do some environmental study, archaeology review at a couple, actually all four of the sites. Well, I'm sorry, three of the sites. Took a look at kind of opportunities and constraints and some site analysis and then developed developed initial concepts. And so that's kind of where we're at now is in the middle of the process project where we have a couple concept plans for each site and as well as looking for input on just kind of overall program, programming that's desired at each of the sites. And like I mentioned, we held our open house and we did have also a meeting with the Planning Commission and Parks Board. And now we're here tonight presenting to you. And so the plan moving forward from here is that we will move into developing final concepts. So selecting one preferred option for each site and refining that concept. And once we develop that, we will come back and hold a second in person and online public open house, meet once again with the Parks Board and Planning Commission and come back to City Council. And the goal of that step is really those check-ins are kind of confirming that those final final concepts are, you know, what everybody's looking for. And then we'll go ahead and wrap up by documenting the master plan with the master plan document for each site. And kind of the final preferred concept plan for each site. So I'm going to hand it off here to Matthew, who's going to run through. So we're going to run through each of the four sites. And then I'll jump back in and give you a brief synopsis of the public input so far and input from the Parks and Planning Commission. And then we can open it up for discussion. There is quite a bit to run through, so please bear with us. And Sam, I go ahead and let us know if we need to pause for any clarification question or anything. All right, Matthew?
Thanks, Justin. So the first site that we're going to discuss tonight is the Remy property. And this area is bordered on the south by Southwest Scotten Way, on the west by Southwest 20th Avenue, and on the east by Southwest 13th Avenue and a retail area that includes Walmart. And although the area is 80 acres, approximately 4.5 acres can be developed because of the existing conditions. Next. Thank you. And those include, there's a large amount of wetlands, habitat bank, and stormwater drainage basins. So as Justin mentioned, as part of our preliminary work, we created opportunities and challenges maps to help define the areas that can and cannot be developed on the site. And so the areas that you see in yellow, those are areas that are viewed as developable. And you'll see one of these maps for each one of the project sites. Next. So Concept One is a passive recreation option that's titled Nature Exploration. And this includes a parking lot, restrooms, a nature play area, there's flexible lawn space, an off-leash dog park, accessible picnic spaces, trails and paths. And this includes extending the existing path that's between Southwest 20th and Southwest 13th Avenue, as well as providing connections to the existing sidewalk on Scotten Way. Next. Thank you. So Concept Two is an active recreation option that's titled Wellness Adventure. And this includes a parking lot, slightly different location, restrooms, splash pad and active play area. There's flexible lawn space as well as a sports field, sport courts. There's a bike pump track and outdoor fitness course and exercise stations, as well as trails and paths through the site. And that also includes extending that existing path between Southwest 20th and Southwest 13th Avenue. Next. The second site is Gardner Oaks property. And this is bordered on the west by Southwest 10th Avenue and the retail area that includes Walmart. And it's also bordered on the north by planned development and on the east and south by single-family residential. The site is 13 acres and similar to the Remy site, only a portion of that can be developed approximately two acres. That's because of the existing conditions. Next. And similar to the Remy site, in existing conditions include a large amount of wetlands, wetland buffers. There's protected oak trees and existing drainage channel and buffers. And again, the areas that we're showing in yellow are areas that are viewed as developable. Next. So Concept One is a passive recreation option that we're titled, titling Nature Grove. And this includes an access area on a future street in the city right away. That's along the east side of the property. There's a parking lot, restrooms, a nature play area. There's flexible lawn space and picnic seating. There's service and maintenance access areas. There's an off-leash dog park, a disc golf area and trails and paths. And this includes extending a park trail to the existing shared use path and sidewalk that are along Southwest 10th Avenue. And we're also providing crossings on the drainage channel. Next. Thank you. And Concept Two is also a passive recreation option, and we're titling this Artful Oaks. This again includes access from a future street in the city right away. That's along the east side of the property. There's a smaller parking lot, restrooms, art displays throughout the site, flexible lawn space and picnic seating. And there's service and maintenance access area, an off-leash dog park. And similar to Concept One, there's trails and paths and those extend to the existing shared use path and sidewalk that are along Southwest 10th Avenue and drainage crossings. Next. Fairgrounds Park is the third site we're going to discuss. This is bordered on the west by a railroad and Northeast Grace Avenue, and on the east by Northeast Fairgrounds Avenue and south on East Main Street. The site is 8.6 acres and approximately 5.6 can be developed. Next. Unlike the other three sites, Fairgrounds is currently developed. So the two concepts that provided, they maintain the existing parking lots, community center and skate park that are south of the site. And the areas that we're showing in yellow are viewed as developable. Next. So Concept One, titled Central Park, maintains three of the existing baseball fields while also adding passive recreation options, which include extending that middle plaza area north and providing some additional tree canopy and some picnic seating. We're providing flexible lawn space and an outdoor event stage, as well as a splash pad and providing improvements to the existing gravel parking lot that's adjacent to the ball fields. Next. Concept Two is an active recreation option that's titled Play Through the Ages. And this includes removing the existing baseball fields and removing that existing gravel parking lot associated with the ball fields and providing an accessible pavilions and picnic areas, as well as sport courts, an inclusive playground, a bike pump track, and trails and arboretum in the northern area of the site. Next. And I will pass the mic. We'll discuss the Durkey property.
Great. Thank you, Matthew. So the Durkey property is a parcel that you probably know well. It is east of the city limits. It's about 35 acres in total, but because of creeks and environmental requirements, there's about 22 acres that is adjustable or developable. It's bounded on the south by 219th Street and doesn't have any other roads around the perimeter. Next slide. So there's some great opportunities with Durkey. It's a beautiful site. Some of the opportunities and challenges, it doesn't have access currently. And you'll see in, there's a little number one at the south end of the site. That's probably the only location that you could feasibly get vehicle access off of 219th and have decent site distances. However, even that location has some challenges because you can see the creek that's just further south and probably, or further west, just west of the entry. And would probably, this would require some road widening to get access to the site if it's intensely developed. It has fairly steep embankment along 219th Street. So the site sits up above the roadway a fair amount. And sewer infrastructure is not in place. We would need some restrooms, large, developable area. Everything that's colored in yellow is developable. You'll see some outlines of existing trees that for the most part are fairly young. And those also could be areas that are developed. Okay, there are some wetlands. So most of the dark, darker green shading areas and along the creek corridor, you can see are areas that would be, we wouldn't be doing any development in. Next slide. So we have three concepts for Durkey. Concept number one is, we call it Hilltop Adventure. That is a using this as a kind of a nature-based recreation facility. So there are things like a ropes course and bouldering climbing area, nine-hole or could even be as high as 18-hole disc golf course, an obstacle course, skate park, bike pump track. This would be a remarkable amenity, not just for the city of Battleground, but in the region. It would be kind of an adventure park like there isn't in Clark County or Northwest Washington or Northwest Oregon. The second option is Concept Two. We call it Sports Center. That is active recreation field. So you can see that there's four Little League baseball fields. And there's room with those four to also have a couple of soccer pitches or divide one up into smaller ones. Soccer, soccer is a variable size field depending on what leagues and ages are being played. Also, in this one, it's active recreation. So we've got some pickleball or and/or tennis courts and basketball courts and a fairly significant parking area. As like all of the options for Durkey, one of the key features is a perimeter path that would take you around the 22 acres of developable land. And because walking, no matter what, is far away the most desired recreational activity for both adults and kids. So we'd have a perimeter walking trail in this concept. And then the third concept is we're calling it Nature Connection. So it does have that perimeter trail, a much smaller parking lot located down at the, I guess you'd call it the base of the hill where you, where the, where you turn in off of 19th or 119th. There would be a trailhead and a kiosk and access into the site. And then there's some pretty interesting site features as well. In addition to just a walking trail, you can see in the southern part of the site, there's a kind of a spiral trail that winds up a hill. And we call that the valley viewpoint. So you get up and there's a wonderful view looking south from there. As you go around the perimeter trail, you'll see we've got in shaded in purple and nature play area. So an area for climbing and jumping and sliding using natural materials. The perimeter trail would also take advantage of those dense trees that were planted in, they're in very, very tight rows on the northern part of the open area of the site where we, you can see a forest labyrinth would be carved into those existing trees so that you could have a place of solitude and reflection along that trail. And then a couple of places where we would take trails to overlook so you could actually see the creek as it runs through the site. So that's the Nature Connection option. And we'll go to the next slide, I think. And then Matthew, you're going to talk to this a little bit?
I was gonna just.
Or Justin, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, so just wanted to let folks know too, part of the process so far has been presenting a board that had quite a few more images than this, but really just working to get input on, you know, just some of the more of the specifics about what types of activities people are looking at, both at specific parks and then just, you know, of these four parks and then just in general throughout the park system, you know, what's missing, what do people want so that we can make sure to incorporate those items into these master plans. And so, yeah, that's been on the open house. We had a board at the public open house and then also on the virtual open house online website. And we've gotten quite a bit of feedback on those. All right. So, yeah, and just, so just to go over kind of like what we've heard so far. So so far, the public open house, we had fairly good attendance. You can see from the the images here, I think perhaps a few of you were there. I can't see, can't see your pictures right now. So I'm not sure exactly who, who all is sitting in on this meeting, but anyway, good, good, good crowd of people. Some of the popular items here were the nature play, pump track, multi-sports fields, pickleball and tennis, disc golf, open lawn, covered stage and covered picnic areas. For Durkey, we kind of heard both sports complex and nature connection. And also, you know, people are interested in the Fairgrounds Park redevelopment, but if the ball fields there go away, really want other folks, really want those to have somewhere else to go in the city. There was also interest that we heard in an aquatic center. And again, that's not really part of the scope of our work, but definitely another recurring theme among input that we're hearing. And, you know, just a desire for kind of inclusive and accessible recreation for, for a variety of ages, whether it's through play or just kind of open, open space that people are able to get to. You know, quick update here, just after we began synthesizing. You know, quick update here, just after we began synthesizing the input we've gotten from from the virtual open house. Basically, starting to tally up the kind of dot votes on the different concepts. At Remy, what we're hearing is preference for this, the kind of nature exploration concept with, you know, kind of various kind of natural activity or, you know, nature play and and some of that sort of theme there. Some some dog park interest there. Gardener Oaks, the preferences emerging for the Nature Grove concept, again, similar themes. And, you know, and I will kind of interrupt briefly to to just say, I think in a lot of these concepts, we we can and actually expect to kind of synthesize some ideas from from multiple, you know, options. So that's definitely something we'll be looking at, you know, if there's a preference for one theme that people really wanted to particular program element from one of the other themes. And it it fits within the the preferred concept, then certainly we'd look to incorporate that and and synthesize something together. So Fairgrounds, again, preference for the the Play Through the Ages concept, which is the one that would remove the the ball fields, but, you know, with the caveat that we keep hearing that another place is found for those ball fields. And then finally, the Durkey property. We were again hearing on the on the virtual open house, a lot of support for the Sports Center idea. But also, you know, fair amount of support for the Nature Connection. And then finally, just kind of looking at the feedback we heard from the the Planning Commission and Parks Board. Some great thoughtful conversation there. At Remy, we heard that we heard that the the Remy would probably end up being the highest priority to actually implement, at least in in that group's opinion. Just be with the nearby development there and, you know, need for for some of the program options that that we could incorporate there. The the preference among that group was for the Wellness Adventure, so a little bit different than the public, but again, you know, we can kind of synthesize, you know, some of the most desirable elements from both of those concept options. Gardener Oak, people liked the Nature Grove theme among the Parks Board. Fairgrounds Park, people like both both concepts, but again, kind of comes back to the ball field element, want to make sure that those have a home to to be at. And then finally, for the Durkey property. There there was definitely support for the sports complex, but some concern raised there that the design for that 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 concept option wasn't really in line with the donor's intent originally from the property. And so also then, you know, a few folks liked the Nature Connection and and also thought that was more in line with the the intent for the property originally. As well as, you know, some discussion of adding a little more activity, like maybe this eighteen hole disc golf course for that site. And I I would add to, you know, Mike mentioned parking there at the Durkey property. There was definitely some sort of discussion among this group of just parking in general for all four sites. And, you know, on the concept plans we've developed, we've we've kind of tried to put in parking lots according to the size that we at this point estimate are are going to be needed, but that's certainly something we're going to be taking a look at and can we're we're going to plan to dial that in a little closer as we move into the master, the final master plans. We actually have a task to do a little bit closer study of parking need once, once we get a preferred option for each site. So that's the end of our kind of content we are aiming to present. Want to open it up for discussion, I guess. I don't know, Sam, if you could kind of help facilitate that.
Yeah, we've got probably fifteen minutes or so for the council to ask any questions. Anybody has questions, jump in? Yep. I don't have it, it's not enabled, so feel free.
So in regards to the second site across east side of Walmart in five oh three. I know a lot of people liked the first plan. I kind of had a little bit of balance. I liked some of the things from one and two. Number two had mentioned an a location for hosting events. Do we have anywhere else here in Battleground where we have that capability to host big events? I know we're using right now Kowanus. And I know we can go, we go to like Battleground Lakes, you have Lewisville for some things, but I'm like, do we have anything in town?
Not that has like a venue for seating or anything like that or a pavilion currently. We have talked about potentially maybe utilizing the berm that is existing at Kowanus Park to maybe add kind of a pavilion to use the yard, the grassy area seating, but at this time, there's no gathering space in the city.
Other than that, I'm inclined to go with a lot of what our citizens comments were. I like the one nature. I like the, again, I like a little bit of a mix. I know it's something maybe we could talk about more about maybe taking a little bit of both aspects and mixing it and making one plan. And then two, for the other one, we desperately, I think a lot of us would agree that we need a sports center. I would be curious to know, they mentioned the donor's intent, they didn't think it aligned with the donor's intent. I'm just curious, do we know what the donor's intent or where they're getting that from?
The family that donated the property, they originally donated it to Clark County and then it was transferred over to the city of Battleground. There are covenants that run with that property with a few conditions, one that no matter what we do, we keep the Durkey name on the property. The second is, I think their intent is they wanted active nature space. There is part of that covenant, there's a portion of the property that goes around where the tree grove is that has to stay in that passive. You can't develop that area, but.
It looks like we would be meeting some of those requirements just by putting the walkway around the whole park. And then, like you said, there'll be buffers along the stream and the trees, so. And just to finish up real quick is I like the Fairgrounds and the idea of having the all age. You know, you have something for all ages.
Yeah, the pickleball, the pickleball carts, the tennis court.
Go down the line, Mr. Cortez.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for putting this together and for all the work on those houses and
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. We're having a hard time hearing you online. I don't know if there if there's a different microphone to activate.
All right, sorry, my apologies. Basically, what I said is thank you for all the work you've done. My my question is, on the Fairgrounds Park, the inclusive playground proposal, idea or concept, have we made, or perhaps it's too early, but I know like the the outfit Harper's Playground that worked with the city of Vancouver to develop a playground that could be accessible to individuals with different cognitive and physical differences. And so I'm wondering if there's an opportunity there to work with an outfit like Harper's Playground.
Certainly, I mean, I think that's definitely on the table. You know, I think pretty much any of these sites where we're proposing some sort of play space, you know, could be made to be that kind of inclusive play. But, you know, this this one would certainly be a good fit for that, I think.
Having a little trouble here, and you're just, we'll carry on to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Just real quick, I just have two things on the on the Turkey property. Number one, the little trees that you you see there, those were planted by the county to try and make it a wetland mitigation bank, and that didn't work out, that's why we ended up with it. So those little trees really have no significance except for they planted them. The other thing, the only question I had for the ball fields, are the baseball fields full size baseball fields?
Yeah, so the proposal for the Durkey, is that what you're asking about?
Yes, for the for the Durkey property, yes.
Yeah, those are full size fields that we're showing on the on the plan. Whoops, sorry.
Yeah, I just see. We I I don't want to replace the ball fields that we have at Fairgrounds Park with small ball fields if we were going to do that. It makes sense to to do the big ball fields and have portable fencing so that it can be used for multiple things. Thank you.
That's number Davis.
Well, I don't have much more to say other than I appreciate all the work that they went into. The open house was impressive and a lot of good options for input. So I appreciate all the work that it went into and it's it's a hard hard choices to make because they all look very well. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Again, thanks for all the work you guys put into it. I am with most of the citizens that I I would definitely like to see some ball fields retained in some way or another for small baseball leagues, Battleground and Little League being one of them mainly. And question, those sports fields, are those, they look like they're smaller than, say, your hundred yard football field. What what dimensions are those sports fields there at Durkey?
The multi sport fields?
Yeah.
I I don't recall specifically, I I know that I just measured like the the foul line or what what have you of the of the ball fields here are about two hundred feet, so I know that I mean, just guesstimating, I I think they're about, you know, a hundred yard field.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're close to being a full size soccer pitch.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you. All right, and I just have a one quick question to that. The diagram you have up of the four Little League fields, what kind of footprint do you need in acreage? So my concern being, I I would agree that tearing out the Little League fields without a replacement is something I wouldn't be in support of. So if for some reason the Sports Center doesn't happen at Durkey, what kind of property would we need to incorporate as far as acreage? The four bars, baseball fields, the two soccer fields and a parking lot and what you have there, just guesstimate if you could in acreage.
It's probably around twenty five acres to to have pretty much what we've shown here, which is for baseball and the soccer fields. You can also see that parking takes up a big amount of space as well. However, I I would say that it would be more ideal if the site was able to have four of each, four soccer and four baseball. And that's because you really need four fields of a type to hold any kind of tournament. And to to get maximum play, that that makes more sense. So it's probably around thirty acres if you if you wanted to do four and four with adequate parking.
Okay, thank you. Sam, you want to wrap this up or? All right, any any other questions for ladies gentleman go? All right, hearing done, we'll close the study session then. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time. All right, hearing done, we'll close the study session then. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike's are hot. Mike's are hot.
Mics are hot. Mics are hot.
No, it was funny. I don't remember the exact year.
All right, welcome, everybody. Calling the meeting of the Battleground City Council, February fifth, two thousand twenty four to order, if you would please, if you can rise and join me in this pledge. Thank you for that. And Ms. Clerk, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Farrar.
Present.
Councilmember DeRozier is absent this evening. Councilmember Cortez. Mayor McCoy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bowman.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Overholzer.
Here.
That concludes the roll.
Uh, Mr. Rochers did reach out to me. She's feeling ill and thought it best maybe to save us all from whatever she has. So entertain a motion to excuse her, I believe, is her first missed meeting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Rochers. Second.
Uh, motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously carries. Uh, moving on to the agenda approval, does any council member see any need or desire to remove or add anything to the agenda at this time?
I approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries unanimously as well. All right, moving on to summary reports and presentations. Uh, this is the part of the meeting where councils will report out on meetings that they attended on the city's behalf. So if there's anything good of the order that comes at the end of the meeting. However, if you attended a meeting on council's behalf, now's your time to report out. We have a couple listed, so I'll hand it over to Ctran if there's a report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the only thing I have to report is that in addition to having a meeting that I attended that we had just normal business, uh, but Ctran has made a special selection and went internally to replace the outgoing CEO. And so Leanne Cover, I believe, is how I pronounce it. Uh, she is their new CEO. She's new CEO of Ctran. And she will be guiding the ship. And Sean Donaghy did wonderful work for Ctran in his tenure there, but now he's going to be moving on. I believe San Diego, yeah, so. Uh, so that's that's really the big thing for Ctran. So nothing else other than that.
Well, very good. Did we have an echo report? I had I did have a a meeting with facilitator, a city manager and I. Uh, and we will bring up the speed when we go through council reports, whoever gets selected to that meeting. Uh, how that went and bring you up to speed. So nothing really to share. Uh, other than that, I did have a lower Columbia Fish Recovery Board. Uh, they're updating their website. Uh, and you will see some uh, data on stocks of salmon that have recovered and some that haven't. So soon as that website's up, I'll have the city send that out to all of you so you can take a look at it. It's pretty good information. Uh, the last meeting report is the Urban County Policy Board. That is meeting here pretty soon. It has been out of compliance because they're not spending the money quick enough. Uh, was able to, uh, Mr. Hirsig was able to help and eliminate some confusion with the county. Uh, so our project's now moving along, whereas before it was stalled, so that will help. Uh, appreciate the city helping on that. So good to spend the money in a timely fashion. Any other meetings that I missed? And you'll notice that those will be listed going forward, so you don't necessarily have to remember, but that may not be a comprehensive list, so please in the future speak up. All right, next up, we have the mayor's report. Uh, I believe we have a guest that's going to help us present uh, an award to the deputy mayor. Um, Tony Sugarman, are you on? Perfect. Maybe if you could tell us a little bit about, um, well, what your role as AWC and kind of what this award represents.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council staff, good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you. I'm Tanya Sugarman. I'm the Member Services Director here at the Association of Washington Cities. And as stated on your council agenda, I'm here to present the Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership to Deputy Mayor Bowman. So the Association of Washington Cities builds connections between our state's diverse cities and towns while providing our members with the support needed to thrive through delivery of data-driven education, nationally-recognized polling programs, and nonpartisan advocacy. So AWC's Certificate of Municipal Leadership recognizes mayors and council members for accomplishing training by earning thirty credits and attending one workshop in each of five competency areas. Those areas are roles, responsibilities, and legal requirements, public sector resource management, community planning and development, effective local leadership, and diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. The Advanced Certificate, which is what I want to present tonight to Deputy Mayor Bowman, is for earning his certificate by obtaining an additional thirty credits and also providing customer service, or excuse me, community service through his work with the Battleground Festival Association. So without further delay, on on behalf of the AWC Board of Directors, we extend our sincere congratulations to Deputy Mayor Bowman for your achievement. We applaud your dedication to continuing your education in municipal leadership. And I really appreciate the opportunity to join your council meeting today to congratulate you. So thank you so much for the opportunity. And if any of you have questions about the Certificate of Municipal Leadership program, I hope that those of you that are planning to attend City Action Days this week stop by and say hi. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at that time or at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time out of your day to do that. I do have a pretty snazzy certificate here for Mr. Bowman. Before I give him to that to him, I did want to recognize, we do have two other counselors that have achieved this. Uh, Councilmember Rochers and and Councilmember Cortez. And I'll also put some heft behind this. I believe Mr. Bowman did all these in person. These were not COVID online courses that he clicked play and walked away from. He actually had to, uh, open his eyes and 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 attend. The importance of this and, uh, just the learnings from the other electeds at these facilities. I I believe Mr. Bowen may have a story or two along those lines, but it is unpaid. It's time out of his day and it, in the end, goes into service of the city. So thank you, Deputy Mayor Bowman. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you. No speech?
You guys probably wish I wouldn't talk. No, I just, I I think it's a great program. It, uh, I know when when Mr. Cortez and and I started this, uh, you used to have to attend the meetings to get these certificates or these these hours that that you needed, and they made it a little bit easier, probably about six years ago. And they started posting them to their website and and so you can go on and you can, um, get the training that you need in these these different categories. For me, it was, um, the 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 community service part. I just never wanted to fill out the application, to be honest with you. And so it took a while for me to fill out the application. But one of the things, you know, for council, we we've got new council members here. One of the things I think that's really important is AWC does, um, they do City Action Days is coming up next week that we'll be at. Um, they do the summer conference. And, uh, they do some other regional trainings. And I think it's important for us to be at those and and not that I don't care about the training side of it, because I do, there's a lot of information that's there. But the networking side of it is important because there's two hundred and eighty one cities. And when you get the opportunity to sit down with other cities that have done stuff that we want to do and and maybe we we haven't quite figured out how we're going to do that. And and you're able to to talk to them and they tell you how to do it or what they did. And it and it just, it makes it a lot easier as as we're going through this, and it allows us to take the collective of the two hundred and eighty one cities and we don't have to do it alone. And so, um, I know the the one thing that came out of this, you know, I I've talked to the mayor about a lot of things, but but we were in a conference gosh, probably eight years ago, and they were talking about a park that was built in Castle Rock all by donations, all all done by citizens, donations, those type of things. And, um, we at the time were kind of running into issues with our Veterans Memorial because it was going to cost a lot of money to build the Veterans Memorial and and we just couldn't we couldn't afford to do that at the time. And, um, by by hearing these ideas and and what had happened, um, we were able to put the Veterans Memorial together through donations and through, um, community involvement instead of prevailing wage and us building it, we had these others that helped us and and it was able to get it done. So that that came out of a meeting, just just sitting there listening. So I really encourage you to get involved. Um, it's an awesome. It's an awesome thing. Get the training. Uh, the hours go by pretty fast and and attend the conferences. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, and rolling right along, we have some, uh, City Council Ad hoc Committee appointments. Uh, the City Council will now consider the appointment of council liaisons to vacant positions on regional and in-house committees and boards. Council members who seek representation on any standing committee board or commission required by state law shall be appointed by the mayor with confirmation by the council. I'll ask for consensus from the council for each appointment. And then finally, I'll request a single motion to approve them all at the end. Purposes of the appointments is to provide the council insight into areas of interest or concern within each board. As liaisons and representatives of the city, it is the duty of council members to remember that their sole purpose in attending these meetings and participating as an appointed board slash committee member is to represent the city. And as such, during these meetings, council members may not act as a representative of any other business group or organization without the express consent of the council. And as you all know, they're unpaid. So you have that going for you. All right. So first, we're just going to go through these pretty quick. Uh, the first one is the Bi-State Coordination Committee Delegate. That's generally held by the mayor, so I would like to, uh, keep that tradition if that is acceptable to the council. Seeing shaking heads. All right, and affirmative. Uh, second is the City of Battleground Ethics and Administration Committee. Uh, the mayor sits on that and then, uh, Councilmember DeRozier is still a member, so I'm looking for one volunteer to be on a committee I'm sure we won't need, right?
Uh, yeah, I I wouldn't mind being on that committee.
Anybody else? Nobody else? All right, perfect. Well, you are now on the ethics committee. Any, uh, thumbs up for that? All right. And then moving on, we have the, uh, Columbia River Economic Development Council. We need a main and an alt for this. This is a non-expiring permanent term beginning January twenty twenty four. Anybody interested in Economic Development Council?
This is an early morning meeting.
It's also zoomable. It's something that I can do if I can get an alternate, if nobody wants to step up and do this.
Looks like it's you.
All right. Looks like we'll hold the alternate up for whoever, uh, makes me mad at the next time. And we'll just make it. No, you want to alternate? Okay, there we go. Thank you. Uh, we need a, also, we need an alternate to Regional Transportation Council. Well, you have stepped up to volunteer, so I was gonna please ask the council to let Councilmember Farrar be that. Okay. All right. Finally, we have, uh, an alternate to the Urban County Policy Board. This is the board that sets up the grants we applied for the Park, McConnell Park and, uh, the pathway. We are deciding between those two. So this is the alternate for that board. Only an alternate. Don't be shy. There we go. And we also have Ending Community Homeless Organization, ECHO. We need a main and an alternate. Do we have?
Uh, I'll volunteer as the main for that.
Overholzer and Councilmember Farrar is alternate. Perfect. Thank you two for stepping up for that. Finally, or not finally, we also have the Budget Advisory Committee. Currently, uh, this is going to elect a chair and report back to council, so I'm looking for volunteers on this one. Councilmember Farrar. I'm sitting listening for.
This this is a good one for for new council members. I just I'd just like to throw that out there.
Cherish did express some interest in this, but, um,
At least for your first year, it's a good place to see you're going to really dig into the budget with staff and then come back to us. So it's a good place to see budget if you want. If you you're going to see it no matter what, but.
Uh, question. So you're looking for one more? It's Victorian. How many?
Uh, on budget advisory, we don't have anybody right now. I mean, technically, uh, Cherish did express, or sorry, Mr. Rochers did express to me that she would like to be considered for it potentially. Uh, the other thing we can do is set a quorum and have the fourth person in attendance. So, um, I wouldn't be too concerned about, I mean, you can still attend. I'm fine setting up quorum, but, uh, we need at least two, uh, to step up for this. And if the third one doesn't step up, then, uh, Cherish just got volunteered, I think. Sorry, Mr. Rochers.
Yeah, I would mind doing it.
Okay, all right. Well, then, uh,
There's three.
What what did you set up for that? Or no, Cherish? Okay, okay. So we have, uh, Councilmember DeRozier, Councilmember Davis, and Councilmember Farrar for budget advisory. And then finally, Evaluation Committee. We need two people to sit on that committee with myself. That is City Manager Evaluation. And this is just to set up the process. You're not actually evaluating. That comes to the full council. So, uh, you're just getting the behind the scenes, setting up the framework, uh, and the summary.
I will if we don't have two others. I will volunteer for that one as well. Anyone else want it?
All right. And then moving on, we have the Clubby River Economic Development Council. We need a main and an alt for this. This is a non-expiring permanent term beginning January 2024. Anybody interested in Economic Development Council?
This is an early morning meeting.
It's also zoomable. It's something that I can do if I can get an alternate, if nobody wants to step up and do this.
Looks like it's you.
All right. Looks like we'll hold the alternate up for whoever makes me mad at the next time. And we'll just make it, no, you want to alternate? Okay, there we go. Thank you. We need a, also, we need an alternate to Regional Transportation Council. Well, you have stepped up to volunteer, so I was gonna please ask the council to let Councilmember Ferrer be that.
Perfect.
Okay. All right. Finally, we have an alternate to the Urban County Policy Board. This is the board that sets up the grants we applied for the Park, McConnell Park and the pathway. We are deciding between those two. So this is the alternate for that board. Only an alternate, don't be shy. There we go. And we also have Ending Community Homeless Organization, ECHO. We need a main and an alternate. Do we have?
I'll volunteer as the main for that.
Overholzer and Councilmember Ferrer is alternate. Perfect, thank you two for stepping up for that. Finally, or not finally, we also have the Budget Advisory Committee. Currently, this is going to elect a chair and report back to council. So I'm looking for volunteers on this one. Councilmember Ferrer? I'm sitting last for...
This, this is a good one for, for new council members. I just, I'd just like to throw that out there.
Cherish did express some interest in this, but...
At least for your first year, it's a good place to see you're going to really dig into the budget with staff and then come back to us. So it's a good place to see budget if you want. If not, you're going to see it no matter what, but...
A question. So you're looking for one more? Victorian, how many?
On budget advisory, we don't have anybody right now. I mean, technically, Cherish did express, sorry, Mr. Roche's did express to me that she would like to be considered for it potentially. The other thing we can do is set a quorum and have the fourth person in attendance. So I wouldn't be too concerned about, I mean, you can still attend. I'm fine setting up quorum, but we need at least two to step up for this. And if the third one doesn't step up, then Cherish just got volunteered, I think. Sorry, Mr. Roche's.
Yeah, I would mind doing it.
Okay, all right, well then...
There's three.
What, did you sign up for that, Overholzer or no?
No, Cherish.
Okay, okay, so we have Councilmember DeRochers, Councilmember Davis and Councilmember Ferrer for budget advisory. And then finally, Evaluation Committee. We need two people to sit on that committee with myself. That is City Manager Evaluation. And this is just to set up the process. You're not actually evaluating, that comes to the full council. So you're just getting the behind the scenes, setting up the framework and the summary.
I will if we don't have two others.
I will volunteer for that one as well.
Anyone else want it?
Councilmember Bowman's willing to take it back. Okay, so we have Councilmember Bowman and Councilmember Overholzer. So I would plead, I would intend a motion to approve all council positions as recommended.
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Oppose? Curious and anxious. All right, just one more thing before we get to the introductions. Just a couple of housekeeping things. We do have the three-minute timer now for public comments, so we will be using that. It wasn't working before, so that's why you haven't seen it. Counselor, you're aware of the pads, please chime in when you want to talk and we will be using those for roll call votes. But main thing is the three-minute timer, so please give everybody time to speak. The public comments, be it either the public hearing for whatever we may doing or just general citizen comments. All right, with that, I'll turn it over to our City Manager for some introductions.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you our new interim Police Chief, Mike McCabe. You join me up here. As you're aware, we're in the process of a recruitment effort for a new chief. Mr. Fort has retired and we have extended a conditional offer to a new candidate that we're working through the background process. But in the interim, Sheriff Porch with Clark County was generous enough to loan us Mr. McCabe. And so he's been with us since the very beginning of January. Doesn't seem like it's been that long, but... So just a little bit about Mike. He worked for Maricopa County Sheriff's Office from 1991 to 1994 and has worked for Clark County Sheriff's Office from 1994 to present. Mike is married with three children, one son and two daughters. Two of his children are out of the house already while the youngest is still at home. Mike grew up in Phoenix, Arizona and attended Rio Salado College and University of Virginia School of Continuing and Professional Studies. He has attended the FBI National Academy, Washington State Executive Management Academy and Northwest Command College. Mike said he loves all things collector cars with a deep interest in vintage SUVs and classic muscle cars. He is also fascinated with ancient civilizations and archaeology. When asked to share a fun fact, Mr. McCabe said family has, his family has been in Arizona since, before it became a state. He is the seventh generation born to Arizona and his son and daughter are the eighth. Why did he move to the rain? Well, that is a longer story for a different day. Chief McCabe said that he is deeply honored to be a part of the City of Battleground community, working for you as an interim chief. And I will say to date, he has been a great asset to have on board and has been a tremendous help to the management team in general. So I will turn it over to you if you have anything you'd like to say.
Well, I know this is a very long agenda you have tonight, so I'll be very brief. Thank you very much for the opportunity. It is an honor to be a part of this community for however long it lasts. I've been a member of the Clark County community for almost 30 years, 30 years in April. Battleground is a part of Clark County. We are one team at the end of the day. And my mission while I'm here is to provide transitional leadership for your officers and bridge the gap between the outgoing chief and whomever arrives to take my place. While I'm here, I'm gonna do everything in my power to make sure that this police department is professional, is attentive to the needs of the community, is goal-driven and is service-oriented. I've set some goals for the agency. I've talked to most of the officers and command staff. My expectations are high, but I believe that they will rise to those expectations. And, and for the community, you can trust that we will be out there every day working hard to keep you safe. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
I, I just have one question. Vintage SUVs, is that like white Ford Broncos? I mean...
So Ford Broncos are red hot right now. If you followed the market at all, if you, if you can find a restored one or a Resto mod, it's, it can be upwards of $200,000. I had a 1972 International Scout that was fully restored that my wife lovingly called the Dragon because of the way it smelled. I've had a Shelby Mustang before. I currently have a Challenger. It's a new Challenger, so I'm kind of cheating. But yes, I grew up with Barrett-Jackson, for those that follow the car community. My dad would take me there as a kid before they were quite as big as they currently are. Back in the old days, which dates me a little bit, it was a white tent and it was on grass and you would drive these cars through. And I fell in love with them. I fell in love with a girl with a 1969 GTO convertible. I have two children because of her, not because of the car. Anyway, we'll save that for another day.
Yeah, maybe not a council meeting, that one.
Yes, I love classic cars.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you. And I believe we have you next up for introduction and a...
Yes.
We do.
We'll have you do the introduction and once you do the oath, we'll step away so you can get a picture and have the family come up.
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, community members, it is my pleasure to introduce one of your newer Battleground Police Officers. This is Steven Solonaker. I'll tell you a little bit about Steven. Prior to working for the Battleground Police Department, Steven has worked for a few law enforcement agencies, most recently with the Skimani County Sheriff's Office, where he served for three years, a little over three years? Right around three years, okay? He's also a member of our Air Force Reserves and he is an Explosive Ordnance Disposal Technician and has been for six years. Steven has a border colleague named Ollie. He grew up in southwest Missouri in the Ozark area, Springfield. It's a very rural area, according to Steven, with good hunting, good people. I don't know if you want me to share this last part of the joke. He says, if you hear banjos, keep driving. There's some places in the county that are similar. In college, Steven majored in accounting, but fell in love with law enforcement and decided to get an associate degree in criminal justice. One of his main goals is to continue his education and obtain his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Steven has completed 1100-hour Police Academy in Missouri. For the, for perspective, Washington State has one of the longest academies and we're only at 720 hours. So he, he was at 1100. He has many hours of in-service training in specialties that include interviewing and also what we call TCCC or Tactical Combat Casualty Care, which is super important if you're, if you're hurt and he shows up. In addition to the many hours of training he received, he's also received training from the Air Force. And he is a certified rescue and recovery diver and he used those skills at the Skimani County Sheriff's Office. Steven's main hobby is learning new things and trying out his skills and roles. And when asked if he wanted to share a fun fact, he said that he does have a southern accent, but he tries very hard to hide it. He's thankful to be working for the City of Battleground and said that if anyone, if anyone has any questions for him, please feel free to ask. And with that, Steven.
Well, first off, thanks so much for having me, everyone here. It's, you know, it sounds like a bit of an exaggeration, but it's, it's amazing to be here. I feel like I won the jackpot just in my short time here. All of two months, I've seen this community. It's, so far, it's been amazing. And that's something we take for granted on our side a lot, I feel. And again, I just, I feel very, very grateful to be a part of this community. And if anyone, I'll reiterate, if anyone has any questions for me, whether it's today or down the road, feel free to always wave me down. Yeah, and any, I'm an open book, so... Yeah, with that, I'll, I'll end it there.
Thank you. We wish you a safe and long career and then we'll let the clerk do the oath and we'll step out of the way.
We'll call that good. All righty.
Camera lady and she'll tell you where she wants you.
Thanks. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steven Solonaker.
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support...
That I will support...
Obey...
Obey...
And defend the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America...
And laws of the United States of America.
And of the State of Washington...
And of the State of Washington.
I will abide by...
I will abide by...
The law enforcement code of ethics...
The law enforcement code of ethics.
And will diligently and impartially...
And will diligently and impartially...
Perform all duties of police officer...
Perform all duties of police officer...
For the City of Battleground...
For the City of Battleground.
County of Clark...
County of Clark.
State of Washington...
State of Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law...
As such duties are prescribed by law. Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. And next up, we, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hirsing for introductions of our new operations manager.
Good evening, Council. This is Grant Burke. He's our new operations manager. Grant was born in Port Townsend, but raised in Olympia. He's got an Associate of Arts degree from South Puget Sound Community College, a Bachelor of Arts degree from Evergreen State College. He started as a facilities worker at Pacific University, moved over to a maintenance crew leader for Parks and Rec with the City of Austin, Texas, and then had several jobs at the City of Bend, Oregon, where he left as a facilities director. He's got a wife, Nita, a daughter and son, Julia and Drew. His in-laws live in Battleground and parents live in Yuma, Arizona. When he's not working, he likes to fish, hike, cook and travel.
Good evening, councilors. Just kind of reiterating what Officer Solonaker said. I really do feel like I hit the jackpot, being able to come to work for Battleground. And I'm really looking forward to planting roots here and serving the community. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. I think nobody but is more happy to see you than Mr. Hirsing.
And Mark, you're still up, so you can...
Yeah, Mr. Weeks couldn't make it today, so we'll move on.
Well, that makes it easy for me. How Dale come up? Dale Irick, he's our new maintenance worker in streets. He had the good fortune of starting right when the ice storm and all of that is. So Dale was born in Sunnyside, Washington, where he lived till he was five. Then he moved to Seattle until he was 12 and then moved to the Battleground area where he lived until 20 and is now in East Vancouver. He went to Battleground Schools and graduated from Summit View High School. After that, he went into the trades. He worked as a mason for over 20 years. And then he, it's there where he started working with P-Bot, including the Max Light Rail. He's been married to his wife Lindsay for 22 years. They have two daughters. Alicia is fresh out of college with her master's degree. And then Tara, who will be 19 and currently enrolled at PCC. As far as hobbies, he likes anything outdoor related. He enjoys elk hunting and sometimes fishing. His favorite sport is soccer and he's played it since the age of five. He enjoys coaching youth soccer players.
I'd just like to say it's nice to be back at Battleground again and thank you for the opportunity and I'd like to serve. So thank you.
Two kids in college?
One just graduated pastors and the other one is now a freshman at PCC.
Love to see that from a longevity perspective because you, that's, you got to pay for that. So you're gonna have to be here for a while.
Oh, I don't plan on going anywhere. From now until the end, so yeah, I'll be here.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you, guys.
All right, well, that concludes our introductions. Next, we have an update. We were requested to bring back some information regarding the Senior Center discussion that was brought up, I believe, at the January 2nd meeting. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cedarholm to give a quick update and background.
Thank you for interrupting your vacation.
She was back.
Yeah, last Monday, can you guys hear me? Last Monday, I tried to attend the council meeting, but that was the fifth Monday and I was the only one here. I was on vacation. Okay, so, um... Okay, so my name is Kim Cedarholm. I am the Recreation Facility Manager at the city. I just completed my third year of employment here in Battleground. And I am honored to work for the City of Battleground and for the citizens. I fall in the category of I absolutely love my job. So this is my forever job and I just want you to, I just want to thank you for my job and just to share that I really do enjoy what I do. Fee schedule. So most of you know that each year I bring my suggestions for changes to the fee schedule to Megan, our finance, finance director and to Aaron. We have a quick discussion, we alter it and then we present it to you guys for approval. Once the fee schedule is approved by council, I jokingly, with my staff, refer to it as the 2024 Bible because it is what it is. This makes my job super easy to have one fee schedule that we all go by. I manage seven front desk staff right now, so we all have to be on the same page at all times. So the one document with one set of rules allows me to treat everybody the same and I take pride in treating everybody the same. So let's see, I messed up here. Okay, so no special deals are had. Everybody is treated the same. That doesn't mean that, that all rental groups aren't unique in some way. But because we have different types of needs for the, for the rental groups, we have nonprofit rates and we also have long-term rental agreements for groups that are here or with us for a longer period of time. Let's see. For example, the long-term senior center with the kitchen for the nonprofit rate, it's $15 an hour and for the private rental rate, it's, it's $30 an hour. Just kind of give you a little bit of history. We had 24 long-term rental groups in 2023. And out of those, did I say 23, 24? 24 rental groups in '23. And out of those 24, there were two that were kind of outstanding as far as not paying what was on the fee schedule. So in, in looking back in the files and going back with written documents and on the computer, we haven't actually raised the senior center fee schedule since before 19, or excuse me, since before 2008. I couldn't go back any further than that, but we have had the same senior rental rates since 2008. So like I mentioned, we had 24 long-term rental groups and out of the 24, I'd had to clean up a couple of them this year. So in doing that, I had many conversations with the two individual groups suggesting different alternatives, such as creating their own nonprofit, looking into joining one of the current nonprofit groups, explaining in detail about our senior activity reimbursement program and even suggested different buildings that they may be able to rent, such as the Qantas Building and churches. I'm going to jump around here a little bit, but I hope you guys are all aware of our Battleground Senior Citizens Group. They are a nonprofit and they serve roughly 467 members. They provide weekly activities, monthly luncheons, trainings, recreational activities. So with the two groups that I needed to clean up, the Tuesday, Thursday pinochle group is one and then the Saturday pinochle group is the other. So I suggested to both those individuals to reach out to the president of the senior citizen group and perhaps join them because that would be the easiest fix, just to join under their nonprofit. So the Tuesday, Thursday pinochle group, they both decided to pursue that. And the Tuesday, Thursday pinochle group was voted in on January 1st of 2024. And the Saturday pinochle group pulled out their request before the January vote took place. I do want to add, um, of course, as you know, the senior center, the cost of maintaining it with electricity and custodial needs, water, staffing, every, goes up every year. We have never turned the inflation cost over to the seniors since before 2008. And each and every one of our senior center rentals and our community center rentals pay for their time that they're in the building and they pay for their time of setup and cleanup. So we do this for a lot of reasons, but the main reasons is so we don't have overlap in time and I know when the individuals are in the building and when they're leaving, so we don't have overlap time or two different groups in. That has been in place since before my time. The long-term rental groups also pay a $50 annual non-refundable maintenance fee. It is not a cleaning fee. It's just an annual maintenance fee. The long-term rental groups do their own setup, their own teardown and their own cleaning. I schedule professional custodial cleaning at the senior center one time a week. And although this isn't perfect, I just don't want to grab another day and turn that cost over to our citizens. So we've made, I feel like we've made a lot of improvements on the cleanliness of the senior center. It's not a perfect world. I have, most of the groups are really good at communicating. So I feel good about the progress we've made in the last three years. So that's kind of what I wanted to present to you. If you have any questions or if you need any clarifications, I'm happy to answer.
Maybe before we go down there, Ms. Clerk, would it be okay if we moved the citizens' comments maybe to this point on this topic? Would that be appropriate? Okay, so we do have a couple of people, citizens, that would like to speak on this. So with the council's behest, I would let them speak and then maybe we can follow up questions at that point. Does that sound? Okay, all right. So we have two people signed up to speak on this topic, so I'd, we'll get the timer up there for you and hear what you have to say on this topic so we can ask questions that are relevant to your concerns. We have Anna Marie Bryant. Yeah, come on up to the podium and I assume this is, you put down senior center as your topic, so I assume this is what you wanted to speak to. Welcome.
I'm not a public speaker, so I apologize very much. Never spoken in front of a council before. We have a varied age group of seniors that go and play pinochle on Saturday nights. We provide a meal. It's a social time. We have people in their 90s who are still coming, 70s, 80s, 60s. It's a wide group of people. And they're still coming, which is the amazing thing. And I love that. I'm in my 60s. I hope I can still play pinochle with a group of seniors when I'm in my 90s. Most of us don't have homes that we can, a large enough for a group, so we have to go elsewhere. And Battleground has provided that place for this specific group for 37 years. And I'm not sure all of the reasons why, but it feels like we're being pushed out and that the price has gotten to the point where it would be difficult for us to pay. I can't think of anything else that I should want to say. It's just, it's a game we love. It's a great group of people. We leave the place clean. We take care of it. We love it. We, you know, we love being here in Battleground. We have Battleground City members that go to our group, so I don't know what else to say, but I just had to speak up for them. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. We have one other speaker that would like to speak on this topic. I assume you'd like to speak at this time as well. Judy Sales.
My name is Judy Salick and I'm from the group that had to be cleaned up. And cleaned up, what it meant to him is we have to become nonprofit. When do seniors have to have a nonprofit to file a 501(c) for no income? The other group that is incorporated, the other senior group she talked about, they get donations from other places. We get no donations and we don't ask for them. We worked very hard to keep that hall clean for 37 years. And if somebody cleans it once a week, come down and look and see the last time the floor was mopped. There is still stains from previous groups where coffee has been spilt and everything. We have to clean off the tables because more than 50% of the time they're dirty. We cleaned up the kitchen and we don't even cook in the kitchen. The only reason we open the kitchen is to get water for our coffee pot. And last Saturday, guess what? Our coffee pot disappeared. It was a 20 cup coffee pot that we left so anyone could use it and it's gone. Gone. But some of the other points I wanted to make is I checked with the Loopki Center. They charge $2 per senior for playing cards to help cover the cost. Marshall Center costs $2 per senior that plays to help with some of the costs. While Shugel and Cam is charging seniors nothing. And they open up the senior hall for seniors to use during the day, not just for rentals, but when it's not rented so seniors can go and have activities. Insurance companies give back to seniors who do senior activities. They give back like $5 a month. It may not sound like much, but to some of the seniors that play, $5 is a meal. We have worked very hard for 37 years and all of a sudden we went from $30 a night to $150 a night. That is unheard of for seniors. This city needs to respect their seniors and give seniors the right to use the hall. It is called Seniors Battleground Seniors Hall, not Battleground Public. It's for the seniors and it needs to be used for the seniors. That's about all I can say. And I hope you consider the seniors when you talk, not just what a car wreck person says that never has any. Battleground is one of the few cities that this, like, city does not offer activities for them.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your comments. Please hold on. Please hold your applause. Thank you. All right, so I'll open it up to council to, we have Ms. Cedarholm here for questions, so looks like Deputy Mayor Bowman, you've chimed in, so you're first up.
Thank you. Ms. Cedarholm, was there a reason given why they did not join with the other senior group?
I don't know the reason. Maybe you can ask Judy that, but I know that they did inquire and talk to their president and then pulled out right before the vote was to happen. I'm not saying that it couldn't happen in the future, but they pulled out. Maybe Judy can answer that.
Okay. That we are not part of the other senior group is because we give away for the first, however many players, five or six players, a little bit of money. Not very much, but a little bit. And if we become members of that, not incorporated, I have to go out of my home. They won't let us do it. They won't let us put money. They have to be donated and we provide a meal. And I buy out of the supply and I don't even get reimbursed for it. I paid $100 for last Saturday so that they could play and I didn't get reimbursed for it. I can't keep doing that. I'm 75 years old.
So, thank you for letting me know. I guess my biggest concern is, is we as a council have made it a priority to reimburse for the seniors and using, you know, our facilities. We also, I remember when I got on council a little over 13 years ago. The community center was fairly new and one of the concerns that I had at the time is it became a nonprofit center. And so the nonprofits were taking most of the time and it was costing us a lot of money for the community center because we had nonprofit rates. And so once the nonprofit started renting it, then they would do long-term rentals and that was taken away from other rentals that could happen at that time. And I think we've kind of cured that. I think, I think we've got groups in there that are, that are using it, but we also have the ability for the community to use it for other events. But we did put in, and correct me if I'm wrong, council, I think it was 10,000, wasn't it? That we authorized?
Oh, for reimbursement?
For reimbursement.
$12,000.
$12,000. $12,000 for reimbursement. Now, the challenge that I see is there has to be stipulations with anything that we do. Because it may be said, well, we're seniors. It may be said, we're the band club. It may be said, we're the Boy Scouts. It may be said, we're this. And the tough part about that is, is we as a governing body, well, we can, but one of the things that upsets me the most is when we pick winners and losers. And we say, well, we'll give it to you because, I'll give you an example. We used to have the Rose Float used to get money every year. Great organization, represented Battleground for 50-plus years. But the council had to make a decision that we were not putting the Rose Float in a building owned by the city for $900 a year because if we do that for the Rose Float, guess what happens when the next group comes along and says we want that building for $1,000? Then we run into a situation. And so we put these rules into effect and, and we do the best we can with them and they're not always perfect. But, but we try to make it as good as we can to pass a state audit. And when the state auditor comes in and says, we're going to look at your books, these things have to pass. And so when, when the state says, this is what a nonprofit looks like, that's what a nonprofit looks like. And, and that's the biggest challenge is, is it's not that it's not a good organization. It's not that you guys haven't had the opportunity to, to use it. This kind of goes back to Mr. Ganley years ago, Mr. Cortez. He talked about C-Trans and when we raise rates and he always said, we should be raising rates every year. Because if we don't raise rates, you look at the difference between 2008 and now, I can tell you in 2008, our police budget was about $1.8 million. In 2024, our police budget is $7.5 million. So there's a big difference and, and the city has to be able to recoup some of that money to be able to keep the doors open. And, and that's, that's the challenge. Otherwise, we start gifting away public funds and, and we can get into situations when we do that. So while I appreciate it, I would rather you guys look into joining with the seniors that are already there and fall under their nonprofit. The nonprofits are, if you're, if you're pretty small, nonprofits tough to do. If you're trying to just do a nonprofit to do, you know, one event, it's, it's pretty tough and there's a lot of things that go along with it. It's not that it can't be done, but, but if the other seniors are willing to help out, I think that's a good thing and we've always been willing to reimburse and it costs them nothing. And which is different than, I think we started that about three years ago. So that in itself changed what the seniors in our community were paying to what they're paying now to be able to use these facilities. And it has turned into a great, a great thing. I know the senior luncheons are pretty packed and the, the, the community center is full with that. So that's kind of where I'm at on it. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kim, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the issue a little bit better. So this one, there's two pinochle groups and this one joined with the other, with the 501(c) group and then the individuals that have spoken tonight are with the other ones that did not join.
Correct.
Right. What, so with respect, I'm trying to figure, what is their primary? What is their, what is their primary activity for both of those pinochle groups? Obviously, it's socialization, which is important of itself. But what is their primary activity? Just pinochle?
Social, yeah, getting together, playing pinochle and both groups do provide food for their players.
Okay, so, I mean, I heard one of the speakers last, last time they came and then this time they kind of touched on it briefly, but they were talking about playing for, playing for money, right? Is, is that why they didn't join? Because they, they play for money? And if they do play for money?
It sounds like it.
Do they have a gambling permit then?
No, the, the senior citizen, can you guys hear me? Okay, should I go to the mic? I'm kind of loud. Oh, it's on? Oh, hi, Mark. So the, the senior citizens group, the big group, they don't, their, their nonprofit doesn't allow gambling. So if you have any type of money exchange for winnings, it's considered gambling. That's what I was told.
Okay, so, but are we allowed to allow gambling in the facility?
I do not think so.
I thought, last I checked, you need a permit for that.
Yeah.
We have a lot of bunks in the hall. It is considered gambling by 501(c). And we play cards and give mainland $5, $10. Oh, wow, we're gambling so much. It is not gambling. It is just some old people playing cards.
Okay, thank, thank.
Appreciate how that you're named all. When they win something that they care about, $5 or $10.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Kim, good job.
Yeah, um, two things. With the big senior citizens group, they took the, the buncow group and also the Tuesday, Thursday pinochle and they get donations for prizes. So it's not like, here's your $5 for winning. It's like.
Gift certificate somewhere.
Or, or even a tangible item.
Yeah.
So they win. So there's a difference between gambling with money and then prizes.
Isn't the difference because there's no entry fee? Oh, sorry. There's no, there's no entry fee for the buncow and the bingo. When they win, they get, there is an entry fee. Well, if, if there's an entry fee, then what's the difference?
So, so Judy's group does have an entry fee. The other groups have a suggested donation at the counter.
Gotcha. So it's, it's, it's more semantics than, because I've been to the senior center and they do their holiday. I've donated to it. They get gift baskets. They do drawings. They're not giving a mandatory $5 and then hoping to potentially win. That's where the gambling. Okay, thank you. That clarify, sorry about that.
Yeah, no, I, I would just, Aaron, I'd just like to learn a little bit more on, on that.
Yeah, we'll look into that because I, I need to read our long-term agreement a little bit better, but I know, you know, for other items, we do require them to get outside permits for other things such as, you know, maybe it's a health department permit. So I don't know if we're indemnified or if we should be requiring a license because that would be an additional license to the state.
And maybe you can reach out to the state and see and inform them of this situation and see if, if that, if there, if there's anything we need to do on our end, so.
I have a question. I'd like to, for Claire.
I have a question. I'd like the clarification. What is the uh, so you're the, sorry, thank you for coming tonight and making this, you know, information available to us. I'm just wondering, what is the, you said there hasn't been an increase since two thousand eight. So I'm not understanding what's the difference between last year, what they were paying compared to what they're paying now in fees.
Okay, so, so I've been here three years and prior to the, the individual who held my position before me did a lot of the cleanup because prior to that, I'll be honest, it was all over the board. It, it was, tell me what you can afford, how much can you pay? It was all over the board. So I don't know when the, that you guys um, approved the fee schedule. I don't know when that went into place, but I know that she did a lot of the cleanup. I walked into a pretty good situation. There were just two groups that were still not following those guidelines and that's what I'm cleaning up for this year.
So they were just kind of um, it seems like now they're having to pay the, the way, the hourly, which is what, thirty dollars an hour since they're long-term renters?
About thirty dollars. Fifteen if they do a nonprofit.
Right, yeah. So, so, and it's all refundable?
Through the senior reimbursement program.
Are they a part of the senior?
They have not. I've, I've, I've reached out to Judy numerous times with the paperwork to fill out. Um, it's basically just a one sheet, um, information sheet with receipts and then it goes to um, Megan.
And so then I'm assuming then if it's thirty dollars an hour, how long are their, their pinochle games on Saturday?
Judy?
We need to pay for five hours because now we have to pay to spend up and gamble.
Right, okay.
We always definitely senior rate. We always provide a meal. We always pay for our hour.
Okay, thank, thank.
Okay. So the senior rate is thirty dollars an hour. What is it for a non?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen is nonprofit and thirty is commercial.
And then thirty for seniors. And what about anybody who's not nonprofit or not senior? How much?
Thirty.
Thirty.
And this is for the senior center.
Gotcha.
Any other questions from council?
I would be curious. One other question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I would have a question for Judy, correct? What would make you happy?
Well, let's.
I'm just curious, looking for.
That's, that's great, but this is, this is not a conversation.
Okay, okay.
Um, I, uh, Ms. Siderholm, I have a quick question on the reimbursement program. If you could uh, clarify that for me. Currently, without joining the parent group, for lack of better phrasing of the other senior group, they don't get the discounted rate because they're on a nonprofit, so they're paying thirty. But if they even send that in, can they get reimbursed or do they have to be part of a nonprofit? So it's just a matter of sending in the receipts for the hundred and fifty to get reimbursed for the hundred and fifty?
Yep. Yep.
I, it, okay. Well, I, I tell you what, um, go ahead and copy my email on, on the next time you send it in. If it doesn't happen, I'll be happy to, to help facilitate the conversation, but it sounds like um, we just have miscommunication and, and not an issue in my opinion. I don't know if council agrees with that. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Hold on a second.
Oh, do you have, do you have walkout music?
Yeah, sure. I have right there. Um, I am wondering on the reimbursement uh, schedule. Uh, so say somebody utilizes the halls, a hundred and fifty dollars, they get their reimbursement in as soon as possible. Is it a billing cycle, thirty days? Is the reimbursement usually?
Yes, so the services have to be rendered. They fill out the, a one sheet piece of paper with their receipt. And then we turn it into Megan and then there's a thirty day net, or thirty day turnaround.
It, it's actually less than that, within a week.
We say thirty, but it's usually less than that.
Okay.
So it's basically money in, money out.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the federal legislative agenda. Ms. Sardman?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Um, in front of you today and as part of your packet is the twenty twenty-four uh, draft federal legislative agenda. Unfortunately, CFM was unable to attend this evening, but um, we would like to get this portion adopted so we can continue lobbying and at the federal level. And then Mr. um, Mr. Skipper will come back and give an update as we get closer um, into the session. So.
Conversation down, please. Thank you.
So um, let's see if I can scroll here. The, the first item on the federal agenda is the Ninety Second Avenue Sewer Extension Project. This is phase two. So phase one, we were able to obtain funding from the state to start putting in the pump station and the infrastructure that would provide the initial capacity. Phase two for this is to upsize the downstream pipes in order to have capacity for the full build out of that West Side Employment Area. The second project on the agenda is the Eaton Boulevard Improvement Project. We have been um, lobbying for this for, at the state level and the federal level. This is quite an expensive project, so we have received some funding from the state last year, a million dollars that will go towards the PED. But we are asking for the additional nine million dollars so that we can round out the funding for this project. And the third project is the Battleground Downtown Revitalization um, to complete the engineering piece. So we were granted three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from the state capital budget that we have just closed off the RFP. We're actually working on that today to select a consultant to start the planning process. This request is as that planning process is completed, it would let us run straight into design as we're looking at some potential transportation changes in the downtown area. Um, and then we also, uh, we've kind of queued up the forced main construction at the forty million dollar mark. We're not actively lobbying this or asking for funding at this time, but we just want to make sure this is in front of our legislators so they're aware that we have this very large infrastructure project coming down the pipe. So um, if there are no questions or concerns, we would look for a motion to approve the federal agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the federal, two thousand twenty-four federal legislative, legislative agenda as it's presented. It's a mouthful.
I have a motion, a second. Uh, Councilmember Fer, did you want to, did you chime in on this or the previous one? I just didn't?
This is.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Olmeyer. I see one through six. I want to go to the other. My bad. I'll get it by the end of next year. Go ahead. You have the floor.
That was from before.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
All right. And the last item on our presentations this evening is a presentation from our Lewis River Rotary. So I'm going to turn it over to our community development director, Mr. Crummet.
Good evening, council. Uh, I might ask Casey Olson to come to the podium. Uh, the Lewis River Rotary put together a, a plan, a master plan for Central Park and Old Town Battleground. And the council approved that in April of twenty twenty-one. Within the plan was uh, a proposal for a pavilion that would be constructed in the center of this park. Uh, the, the Lewis River Rotary has presented this concept to the Parks and Community Engagement Board, which recommended approval. So here with you this evening um, is uh, Casey Olson and Byron Jolma to present the proposal. And I'll pull up a slide here to show that to you.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, good evening. Uh, Sam stole my whole thunder, my whole speech here. Uh, so, but, but I'll, but I'll make it quick because I know we're, we're close on time. So, so good, good evening. Uh, my name's Casey Olson. I'm the community service chair for our local Lewis River Rotary Club here in Battleground, Washington. Uh, I'll be co-presenting today with Byron Jolma from Jolma Design. Uh, he's our partner on the Battleground Central Park Pavilion Project. Uh, to provide a little context, uh, actually, I'll just skip over that. Everybody knows uh, uh, what happened. Uh, but the, the, the important part was the, uh, the vision uh, came from uh, one, one of our club members, Mike Robinson, who passed away back in July. Uh, and so I've made it a duty to uh, to keep pushing forward with his vision. Um, so since uh, your support uh, and with the uh, continuing support of the community and the city, Battleground Central Park has thrived. Um, we've had countless hours of beautifying the landscape, uh, planting tulips with the Battleground School District Dream Team. Um, clearing, well, we coordinated clearing of evasive species with the Casey Group, the uh, Center of Agriculture and Science Technology. Uh, I, I think I butchered that. Um, but uh, we, we coordinated it, but because of the weather, we couldn't do it, but we're trying to um, bring it, bring it back forward here in the springtime. Uh, and uh, the transformation of the Citizen of the Year Rose Garden, uh, complete with name placards and a beautiful brick uh, pathway. So the proposed, uh, proposed pavilion, uh, we want to share with you today uh, adds to the existing charm of the park and a place for fellowship and enhancing the overall experience. Uh, so pending your questions about the history or the background of their club, anything I could provide for you, I'll turn it over to uh, Byron to talk about the plan.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And yeah, I don't have a whole lot to, to add to what Casey stated. I, I do want to acknowledge we did team up with Mr. Charles Shepherd with the Cascadia Tech, the Skill Center and his CAD class. So as Casey mentioned, this was a vision brought by Mike Robinson and who unfortunately, like Casey mentioned, passed away unexpectedly about a year or so ago. And while unfortunately, we didn't get to see his vision come to reality, we are excited about the prospect of getting this constructed and it's um, i- it's a kind of a consolation that, yeah, that, that it's um, that with the council and the city's support and in the capable hands of Casey, that yeah, we're confident this project will be built. And also wanted to mention that I don't think anything epitomizes the definition of selfless service more than the fact that um, Mike, he, he did not want the accolades or the recognition of having his name or associated with, with the pavilion. So again, he, he will be missed, but like I said, it's in capable hands with Mr. Olson and we appreciate the, the support. And like Casey said, there's any questions, we're happy to answer them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, moment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to tell you guys both, thank you. Uh, it's been amazing to see the transformation of Central Park and, and the Rotary um, has really stepped up down there and um, it's nice to see those partnerships and uh, have people take pride in the community. And I think this is a phenomenal project. I think it's going to look great. Um, it's in the heart of downtown and I know as we're going through the, the master plan for the downtown corridor, that this is going to be part of that. And so I really appreciate the work that you guys have done and I love that you used Cascadia Tech to help you out. Great program. Thank you.
Councilmember Cortez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I will echo what the deputy mayor said. I mean, actions like this is what exemplifies community, right? Uh, I can, as we go through the um, uh, plan to look how, how do we redevelop or reinvigorate the, the Old Town Downtown Corridor? You know, actions like this are, are moving us in that right direction. So I can, I can envision us like summer times with, you know, small little concerts out in the park and um, it, it, it's, I, I'm just so excited uh, to see this come to fruition. I'm curious, how, what kind of audience or, you know, people that could fit in a venue like this? I mean, do you, do you have an idea or?
Oh, okay, all right. Uh, so I mean, it's the left and right limits of the Central Park, you know, all, all considered. Uh, but we are uh, very much into increasing uh, the traffic that's down there, the foot track, especially with the uh, the newly paved area for, for the food trucks I just saw. That's fantastic. Uh, but more importantly, uh, just a, a place for fellowship, a place to sit down, throw a blanket out, eat. Um, we uh, have uh, with, with working with Sam, uh, making sure that it's ADA compliant. We want to run electric, electricity to it. And we don't expect, you know, big bands to come out and play, but you know, we have a music, uh, a music shop that's right next door that plays, you know, on a, on a beautiful uh, spring or summer day, just having those students be able to come out, plug a couple amplifiers, amplifiers in and play while people gather around, you know, small audiences like that, something that really signifies um, Battleground.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you so much.
I was thinking about the uh, the local businesses in that area too. Oh, sorry, my thing is not on. It's not working.
Push the button.
I, I just want to again, thank you guys for everything you've done down there and what you continue to do down there. I firsthand have witnessed um, how awesome Central Park is and being such a small park, but right there on Main Street, um, just last summer. Uh, and, and the beautification of that park, uh, got to see the rose gardens, but also heard a choir sing in that park to the whole community. Um, and so that's kind of thing that you guys are doing and I just look forward to this pavilion getting done and and seeing how the community can utilize that more. So thank you.
Thank you. And I'll push that to the club uh, as well. And uh, just the next phase is picnic tables. So hopefully we'll be able to come back and present on that. So, thank you.
Did you get it? Councilmember Fer, did you have? No? Thank you, gentlemen.
That concludes presentations for the evening.
All right. Uh, moving on, we have citizens communications. I will now open the meeting for citizens communications. Individuals are limited to three minutes to provide comments. This time is an opportunity to hear from various members of the public in a limited public forum and not an opportunity for extended comments or dialogue. Although the city council desires to allow the opportunity for public comment, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. The council may not be able to respond to individual comments and may refer citizens to a staff member to assist. Uh, clerk, do we have any members, any other comments to be added to the record? I do have one, but it's uh, regarding Northbrook. I'm guessing we want to move that comment to the um, hearing? Yes, okay.
Uh, there's no comments on, on Zoom?
Okay. Moving on to consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of item A, city council regular meeting minutes. Item B is claim vouchers, as is C and D. E is payroll, F is payroll. G is the Ninety Second Avenue Pump Station and H is uh, in an inter-agency data sharing agreement. Does any member of council see any reason to pull any member, any item of the consent agenda off?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cortez and a second by Deputy Mayor Bowman. Any other discussion? Seeing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, now we will um, open the public hearing. For ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash zero one, Northbrook Development Agreement, public hearing and motion. I do want to open up the comments straight away, Ms. Clerk. Okay, and I do have one signed up. Mr. Spiller? I, you're the only one I have signed up, so the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm here today as a member of the community. My name's Camden Spiller. I live and work here, run a business uh, here in Battleground. As uh, I'm also here as a neighboring property owner and as the president of the Battleground Village Master Association uh, here in in uh, in the village. And we've been unanimously opposed to this project since two thousand twenty-one. I uh, I do know Jay, uh, Dave and Joel personally. Um, as a real estate investor myself, I have great respect for their, their work and uh, their interests in advocating for the project. As uh, like most of us, like all of us, um, they uh, need to advocate for the highest economic uh, value for the, for the property. And in today's climate, the highest economic value is ground floor apartments, a ground floor apartment complex, which is against zoning, which is why we're here today. I'm advocating against this um, special accommodation uh, because there's associations against it, but also personally, because I live and work here. I, my kids are in the neighborhood. We walk the sidewalks, work here. I have a very personal connection with what's going on here in. I have a very personal connection with what's going on here in, in the village. And first, if I can just say a word about developers agreements in general. Developers agreements are opportunities for the council to change the rules, to give a special treatment to a project, to make a special deal. And sometimes that's a good deal. Sometimes that needs to be done. Our city has seen some, some good deals come to fruition. The deal is only as good as the give and take. The cities that give things, in this case, a ground floor apartment accommodation, which is otherwise not allowed. And what are they going to get in return? It needs to be something that the people want, the city needs. In this case, I think it's neither. I think the developer's agreement essentially says, let us convert this commercial land to residential use. Or just to pick one of the hazards of this, we'll build a project that makes the parking, the, the safety, the recreation problems that already exists in the village even worse. I feel like this DA is asking us to pick our poison, to reduce the quality of life in the village, either moderately or severely. On behalf of all of us over there, I'm asking you to pick no poison for, for us. I'm asking you to decline this developer's agreement entirely. The city doesn't have to make this deal. They're under no pressure to make this deal. The city doesn't benefit from this deal. The zoning doesn't allow this deal. That's why it has to be special treatment. The adjacent property owners don't want this deal. The community doesn't want this deal. I think you've heard from a number of members of the community, some of which are here tonight, the community does not want this deal. If you want to support local jobs for local people, if you want to keep the city out of special treatment, if you want to respond to the citizens who voice their opposition, please decline this. Please vote against this developer's agreement. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Spiller. Are any other individuals who wish to provide their three minutes of comment on ordinance 2024-01? All right. Do we? Yeah.
Good evening, council. Mr. Spiller gave a convincing testimony, which I, I followed up to and I emailed to you guys today. And I think out of the seven comments to council, five are Camden's employees. It's kind of a, you know, I've been a very straight shooter with council and with the city through this whole project, along with my partner. And I think what Camden's telling you is a lot of, a lot of bull hockey. I mean, it's a mess. And so we try to, we try to run a straight ship and that's not what you guys are getting from him. So let's go back in time. There was other council members here. We bought a piece of dirt that was zone ML, light industrial. The developer agreement expired. It became zoned downtown commercial. That zone allows for our main street uses, ground floor, commercial, apartments above it, storefront retail. Well, we've all been to the, we've all been to the village. We've seen what's happened there, how it's been slow to emerge and the limited amount of commercial activity on that ground floor commercial space. We don't have the bodies there. We don't have the, we don't have the consumers. We don't have employees for these, these warehouses and these companies that are coming to town. So what we're advocating for and what we've been working with council on for three or four years is affordable housing. It's a workforce housing project. We are still retaining that ground floor commercial space. We're still retaining, but what we're doing on the downtown commercial zone, and you can go through the notes of this thing going back four years with council, is we don't have to provide one parking space. We can provide a podium building that's a hundred percent site coverage on three and a half acres. I think we model it as 500 units. It's 500 people parking on the streets. We're parking 1.5 to one. We're parking, we're meeting code. We've worked through council. We've went through step by step, every thought, most of parks, most of pedestrian, most of retail. This is a live, work village. People have to live there, work there, shop there. That's the whole idea. That's the vision with a mixed use development. And, you know, so we've, we've been through this. And this is, this, this motion tonight is to ratify a developer agreement that council's already said, hey, let's draft it. Let's have our, let's have our attorneys waste our time. Let's waste taxpayer dollars on drafting this thing. You guys are just here to ratify it. Like all the, all the details have already been gone through, meeting after meeting after meeting. But Camden wasn't here to, to, to diminish those. He wasted the last minute. Why? I don't know. I have no idea. What's his motive? I don't know. But five of his employees, that, you know, the only thing he does is write their page, sign their paycheck, seem to have something to say about it. And a handful of them don't live in the city. It seems, it seems dubious. It seems slight. And I think you guys deserve more than that. I've been very straight with you guys. Joel's been very straight with you guys. And you guys deserve more. The city deserves more. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Somebody else? Okay. Please state your name and.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Joel Sterling. I'm a registered engineer licensed in the state of Washington. And my normal role before a council like yours is to present a project, talk about how we meet code, how we have designed the project to meet the intent of an owner and comply with the standards of a jurisdiction. In this particular case, I've been working on a project that has moved many times over the last four years. I have presented three or four of the different options to you. Many more of them to city staff, which I appreciate their input and discussion. But ultimately, I also listen and I take what I hear and I put it into a graphical representation. In your packet, there was a copy of our site plan. And I noticed it didn't have the green tint for the grass and what we're showing is parks. For someone like me, presentation is everything. So I made a point to bring copies of the plan with the green to emphasize that I have listened to you, previous council members also. And we have focused on providing parking when parking is not required in this zone. We provided parks, open space trails, internal amenities that the residents of this future community are going to enjoy. We're not proposing a high density podium style apartment complex, which Mr. Campos talked about. I have gone through a pre-application conference with a development like that. It's over 400 units. It actually has less commercial space on the ground floor because under the commercial code, we can actually use that bottom floor for parking. So what you end up doing in that scenario is you reduce the commercial, the actual usable commercial, and you replace it with parking under the building. I don't think that gets the Battleground Village to the goal that we're looking for. We want a livable neighborhood. We need residents that will work nearby, maybe be able to walk or bicycle. But ultimately, they also have to have a quality of living. And that's what we heard from the multiple council meetings was people were focused on parking and parks. The plan before you, we did not think we were presenting a plan tonight. We thought we were just ratifying a DA that confirmed the plan that you had already agreed to. So that's all I have. I'm available for questions on the technical side if you have them, but I, we appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience would like? Okay, good testimony. Madam Clerk, do we have any members online that wish to testify?
No hands are raised, Mr. Mayor.
No? Okay, sorry. All right. Seeing no further members of public wishing speed, I now close the public hearing at 8:25. And I will open it up to council, ask her questions. Councilmember Cortez, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I kind of feel like the spirit of Mr. Ganley is kind of coming out in me right now. Deputy Mayor Bowman will, will appreciate this. You know, going back on this particular piece of property, you know, if we really, really go back into the past, you know, the property was originally developed, prepared for, entitled by the Akins and then sold off to Mr. Pavlina, who had this big vision that this was going to be a live, work community and this was going to, you know, be this very, very vibrant place full of businesses and people that lived and worked there and and the fact that it was so far off in terms of the normal economic hub of the city was going to be a mute point. And throughout the years, that has kind of come to the realization that it didn't quite work out that way. And I know we, you know, ratifying, it's been said that, you know, ratifying a DA, you know, we shouldn't do it because of, you know, it's not best practice or whatever one of the speakers said. And, you know, fact of the matter is we've, we've ratified several DAs in that development with Mr. Pavlina and the like throughout the years, just to meet market conditions that, that were there at the time. And so the fact that we have a DA that's, that's looking to move forward doesn't really cause me too much pause because we've done it before in that specific area several times. My, you know, the, the, I don't want to go into the project. It's come before us several, several times. It's, you know, as a side note, that's not related to this project. It's no, it, it's no hidden fact that, you know, our, you know, communities in our state, communities around the nation have, are dealing with cost of living, right? And our communities know different, you know, entry level homes are, you know, five, $600,000. And, and, you know, lots of people are looking to rent rather than own. And that's why our, our community is getting a lot of attention when it comes to multifamily. But it's no different than many other communities too. So this definitely aligns with, you know, providing affordable housing to our community. But I think more importantly, and I'm, I'm interested to know about this. I think I brought this up at the last time this was before us in terms of the economic impact. I believe I asked, you know, what, what is the economic impact that this will bring short term in terms of the construction, sales tax activity, as well as the long-term economic impact in terms of, you know, what, what, what is the property taxes going to be generated off this unit? What is the utility tax going to be generated off this unit? What is the, you know, estimated activity once it's all leased out? You know, what is that going to look like? Have we had a chance? Have you had a chance to talk to the developer on that?
No, that's not something we would typically have at this point in the game because we just have a preliminary concept at this time. We don't have the actual square footages, the construction costs that it's going to take to develop that or an idea of what those commercial spaces may be at this time. So that would be something, you know, as we got closer to getting a preliminarily approved project and understood what those actual costs were going to be to permit, then we could, we would have a better idea of what that looks like.
Okay. So then to put this into perspective, when we had Mr. Fontanet come before us and he was his project and he was able to provide those numbers. He was further along, that's what you're saying?
He, on his own, had hired Johnson's Economics to do that study to present to council. So he had a better idea of what he was looking to construct at the time and use that as a basis. We could probably do the same thing. We don't, I mean, we could compare it to a similar sized project within the city, but we wouldn't be able to get down to that type of detail unless we had the actual information of what was going to be constructed.
All right. I mean, at this point, I'd like, I'd like to kind of get a generalization of what those numbers would be. Just not only for my information, but I think those are important data points for even some of the new council members that have come on board. So and again, not, not holding anybody to exact numbers, but we would like to know, you know, a generalization of the economic impact of all the items I just stated. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Cortez, Deputy Mayor Bowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of things. I just, I just want to get clarification from the city on this. When, when I hear that our job tonight is just to ratify this, that is not correct, in my opinion. Our job tonight is to look and see if we would like to ratify this. We, we never, we never went into anything and said, go do this and you will get this, correct?
That's correct. We did, we've had multiple presentations and conversations regarding this. There's been a lot of back and forth about what the council would like to see in regards to open space, parking and so forth. Those have all been expressed from the DIAS. You did grant staff permission to continue working with the developer to put those things into a DA. So we have taken that. We've run this through legal. They've gone through their SEPA process to make sure that all those i's are dotted and t's are crossed, but you in no way committed to approving this. That, that obviously can change at any time until the adoption of the development agreement occurs.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure on that. Cause you know, in, in, in my years on council, I've seen a number of developer agreements. Some have been good. Some, in my opinion, have not been good. And, and the reason for that is, is changes in economics sometimes have to play into that. Changes in what the land can be used for. You know, we'll go back to Mr. Fontanet's project. That was one of the first ones that had already been approved before Mr. Cortez and I were on council. And, and that was a promise of so many jobs and so many, you know, so much infrastructure money. And, and then it changed to, well, apartments are allowed. And so apartments were put in there because the downturn in the economy really affected building commercial stuff. And this area here was prior to Mr. Cortez and myself coming onto council. And, and it was originally all light industrial, if I remember right. And we had an overlay on that that we had to approve every so many years or we go back to the original zoning. And we had places like the Abbey that were sitting there that were zoned as a commercial building. And if we didn't approve it, it would go back to, because nothing had happened there. And Mr. Pavlina came in multiple times and said, I can't get industrial land sold and we need, or light industrial land sold and we need to build apartments. And they built apartments. Then we needed a 55, an older community and they built that. And then it was a memory care facility. And they were going to tear stuff out. They wanted a memory care facility. They wanted us to change it for a memory care facility. And we told them, when you have a signed contract for the memory care facility, we'll look at it. And that went away because there was no signed contract for it. And there, there are some things that, that play into this. I mean, whether it happens or not, we got the county working with the railroad operator or fighting with the railroad operator. I don't know if they're working with them. There's a fight there of, can we run trains through here again from Chilachi Prairie? And these are areas, I, I don't know the last time a train rolled through the Battleground Village and let its horn go. But I will tell you this, we'll know when it happens because there'll be a lot of people calling us, wondering why the trains are honking. And we'll have to tell them, well, your, your houses were built on in light industrial land to begin with. And we changed it and we changed it and we changed it. And now we're seeing, now we're seeing a complete shift where we don't have enough land for jobs and we don't have enough land for expansion and buildings and stuff like that. And that's why we're looking at the 92nd and what we're doing there and the pump stations. And so this, this tends to, you know, as, as Mr. Cortez and I have sat here, we have seen a lot of different things change in this city. And, and I, I appreciate every developer that's willing to develop here and, and I understand the process and, and I've done some myself in other areas and it can be quite tiresome and, and burdensome and, and drive you nuts working with governments. But you know, I just, I just, I think that there's two options here. You know, I just, I just, I think that there's two options here and I think. You know, that's, that's something that we're going to have to, to figure out as a council. The one thing that I would. Personally like to see is we, we don't have a full council here tonight. I would like to. I don't mind discussing this and going over it, but I would like to, to hold off on a vote till we do have a full council. Here to make this decision because these are decisions, doesn't matter which way this goes, we're going to yell that. It, it doesn't matter. If you want to put apartments in, you're going to yell, yell that. You're going to get yelled at by those that have been around for a long time and said, we're ruining this community. If we decide not to put apartments in, you're going to yell that and, and so either way, I mean, you're going to get yelled at, so. Welcome to the club for you new, new people. But I think, you know, trying to make the best informed decision. And then understand that things may change. You know, I look at this, this document right here and when I see possible. That tells me it's going to happen. Anytime we have a developer's agreement, it says possible. But i- if, if we're putting it on there, it's probably going to happen. So we have to be, to be willing to do that. Now it may change, you know, possibly it might be townhomes, but. If for some reason the commercial space starts developing really fast, it could be commercial space too. We, we just don't know. But, you know, that's, that's going to be the, the thing that we have to weigh and. You know, I appreciate the work that's went into it. I appreciate anyone that's willing to come here and develop and put money into the community. And we have two different sides that have done that and, and we'll figure it out. You know, we'll have to, we'll have to take the vote and, and, and figure it out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Bear. Bowman? Any other counselors? Questions, concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to make a motion or just give direction, but I, I would like to echo what Deputy Mayor Bowman just. Requested and that's we push this off to. Either the next council meeting or a future council meeting so we could A. Have a full council and B, hopefully give you some time to get that economic impact. Back, so.
I, I don't, technically we don't need a motion for that. We could have a motion to table if you wanted for one meeting, but I don't think technically we need that. This is not a time sensitive matter, other than the developer obviously has time and money invested in it. But it's not from the city's perspective, unfortunately for the developers. This is not a time sensitive matter for us, so. There's no table motion needed, but if you'd like to, we can. But it's really, I'm looking at the rest of the council, what they'd like to do. I have a couple of members that want to wait. What am I hearing?
It's unfortunate, this first presentation was on April 5th, 2021. And here we are in February of 24 and we're still having these discussions and. I understand. Wanting to get more information on it. The council member Cortez's point, and I also understand that we don't have a full council right now to have a full vote. But I also understand that. You know, we, we keep kicking the can down the road, so to speak and. Avoiding the. The inevitable that we're going to have to vote for this, so. I, I agree with you guys, but I also, it pains me to. Have this be the bureaucratic process of holding up a developer and holding up a HOA community of not knowing. Which way we want to move on it, but. I suppose we could table it, so I'd make a motion to table it till our next meeting in February. Any seconds?
Do I have a second?
We did find, Megan was able to pull up an old email from Mr. Fontanet's project. With that information that we went through for that, we could give you that this evening. It's, you know, like I said, it's not going to be exact, but I think his project was, is it total 180 units? Yeah, so it's going to be fairly close. I think this one is slated at 130, 132. So it, I mean, we can, we can take that and. Bring it down, but we do have those numbers available and we can adjust those accordingly with the, with the numbers and add a little bit of commercial space. So I think we could get that fairly quickly if you would, or we can give you what those numbers were this evening.
Well, it sounds like the numbers are going to be there pretty quick. I mean, almost tonight, if you will, but. But then we still don't have a full council, so I will go and second your motion. Councilmember and just table it for one meeting.
Okay, and we'll vote on that motion here in a second. I do have one question. Send to get to my mind. I noticed on this it has. Sam has proposed design uses City of Vancouver parking standards. Are our parking standards the same?
No, they're. What the applicant did was somewhat of a blend. The Vancouver's dimensional standards are slightly smaller than ours. But they did follow our 1.5 ratio and then for one bedroom and studio, we allow for. One parking space per, for one unit.
And I hate to interrupt, but I think we have a motion on the floor that we need to vote for.
You can still have discussion.
So, but I wanted to get that before we table it and then we can't talk about it till next meeting, so we still have discussion even after motions on the table.
Okay, fair enough.
Just to clarify the motion, table for one meeting, does that mean bringing it back on February 20th? Or would you like to see it on the March 4th?
I, I hear that is February 20th, the next regular business meeting.
That was, that was my intent.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
All right, okay. And just when, when this comes back, I, I would like more information on those parking standards and what that would look like. If those were battleground standards. Motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Should we try the roll call? Sure, let's go. Should we use it just for once? Since we got the new pads. So this is a motion to table this. This ordinance until the next regular business meeting. City clerk call for roll call. Just to clarify, a vote yes is to bring it back next meeting, a vote no is. And this is our practice vote, by the way, so. I'm disabled, so.
No, we haven't voted.
There we are. See, that's why we practice. Lock into votes? Oh, she should be absent. Okay, passes unanimously. So we will. Bring this up for the next regular business meeting. Okay, next up we have ordinance number 2024 dash zero two. Zoning cone amendment for downtown zone automobile service stations. We have any questions or discussions for this ordinance from council? And we're disabled for.
Move to adopt ordinance 2024 O2 is presented.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, did you want me to read the title of the ordinance?
All right, yes, please, but we also, our panels are disabled this one. So it's okay, let's, let's move ahead. If you, if clerk would please read the title, we have a motion in a second.
An ordinance amending battleground municipal code. Title 17 zoning, zoning, chapters 17. Dot 118 commercial districts and 17 dot 135 automotive service stations and gasoline sales.
Thank you. Any other discussions or questions before we go ahead with the vote on this? Okay, let's just take a voice vote if that's okay there, buddy. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, Mr. Crummett's going to present to us a Humane Society Southwest Washington contract for services that. Some of us went on a tour of. So, everybody, Mr. Crum.
Good evening, council. Thank you for those who are able to attend the, the site visit, the tour last Monday. I'll just try to kind of get right down to the essence is. We enter into a contract with South, Southwest Washington Humane Society for. Services for stray pets, et cetera. And these are two-year contracts. The proposed contract is for 24 through 2026. On the second page of your staff report. Kind of shows a breakdown of our annual fee. And it incrementally increased, so in 2024. 68,460 and then it would jump up to 79,000 and then 90,000. During our, our site visit, there's a little bit of explanation of just the cost of doing service. As well as other sources of funding that the Humane Society gathers to run their facility. So this evening, presentation only just to kind of give you the numbers and then at our next council meeting. We would ask for a recommendation.
Any councilmembers have questions? I, I will say that, thank you for setting up the tour. It was very informative. I think of their budget was $7 million and there was $5 million in donated time, I recall. So, personally for us to go out and do this on our own, we're. We would have to find a lot of donated time, so although this is a huge increase. I would, I don't think there's much hesitation. I'd like to see this just pull forward on the consent agenda the next meeting. I was really impressed by the tour, by the empathy and, and the facility itself, so. Unfortunately for me, we've adopted cats out of there, so that didn't play into the decision, but. More of a dog person, but there we are. Yeah, did you? But it, it is very nice, those that. Wish to go that didn't get to go, I'm sure they would do another tour for you. They're very. Very open. So no questions for Mr. Crummett. All right, we'll see that consent agenda next meeting. And any administrative reports today, Ms. Erdman?
Not this evening.
Okay, that brings up council communications. This is part of the meeting where if you attended a community event, go to the order. This would be the time. I'll start it off with just thanking department heads and. City manager for setting up the retreat. It was very productive, it was nice to do and I hope to see that as an annual event. And people taking time out of their day, so thank you for that. And I, I don't have a pad, so just chime in with, anybody else have something for the good of the order?
I just have, I actually have two. I just wanted to let council know that, that. Yes, I went to the cheerleading, state cheerleading championships this last weekend here in Battleground.
Did you win?
I did not win, but if you get the opportunity, like, I don't know, like, I can't believe I'm saying this, but. I, I went last year and I went this year and it's pretty, pretty impressive and it's amazing. There was probably close to 4,000 people in the school on, on Saturday night, so. I, I've asked to see, and I don't know if there's any way we can ever dial down to two days. And find out what the economic impact is, but. Those, those people are there all day, they're eating in town. I will guarantee you Margarita Factory does pretty good. That's probably their, their second and third largest days. Minus the Harvest Days events, but. But just a, it is a pretty impressive event. If you get the opportunity next year, it's always held here because. Battleground has one of the largest gyms in the state and so that's why they hold it here. Second thing, I just wanted to let council know, in two weeks, I'm, I'm. Not going to be here, but I will be remote because we, we just said. That we needed everyone here to vote, so I, I will be remote for you guys, but I'm, I'm going north. I'm doing a rally race and I just wanted to let you guys know that we have. From the city of Battleground, a young lady that is participating for the first time in Iditarod. And she will be starting. The race on March the 3rd, I think, Saturday, no, March the 2nd, Saturday, March the 2nd. But my race ends in Anchorage at the start of the Iditarod and so. I've asked the city to, to get something together that we, if council is fine with, can present to her. To take along with her on the trail and hopefully the, the thought was maybe. To recognize her and for, for, for doing this and what she's doing. And then there's another gentleman actually from Amboy. That is, that is racing too, so we're going to try and hook up with both of those if, if you guys are fine with that for me to do that for you.
Be great to get some pictures maybe on the city website or social media when the whole thing's all said and done. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. So even though we're not adjourning right now, we're going to go into a closed door session for exempt. As pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 140. Parenthesis four parentheses, be the city council now in our closed door session to plan or adopt the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during any collective bargaining or mediation proceedings. We don't know how long that's going to take, but there will be no action taken afterwards. We will immediately adjourn. It doesn't matter at the time. We don't have to set a time for exempt. We do not, only exempt, so, so we will be back once it's done and then adjourn the meeting. So that's pretty much the end of the business meeting, so thank you all for your patience and we'll see you next time.
And I'll probably need five minutes or so to get that fired up for.
That's fine.
So you can take your, take a break if you need.
Sounds good.